Testing, testing, one, two, three, testing. Do you need me to just sit here and talk for a minute? So... Oh, you're not? Okay.
And what you're gonna want is that April 1st date. So you're gonna open up the plus line. And that's what she needs to see.
Okay. And so I just leave that?
Just that, yeah.
And I don't minimize it? Do I minimize this one?
No, you can leave it there. And then all you're gonna do is you're gonna push it down like this, because we have confidential information, and just leave it like that.
They say it's actually really a leisure zone. You try to go past that little...
It'll automatically shut itself off. But if you kinda just open up for the matter, leave it there, and just...
Later.
In the restroom?
Wrong guy hit with the door, huh?
Huh?
The wrong guy hit with the door on the way in.
Mike, that water meeting's on the 8th and the 9th, this Tuesday after our board meeting.
Right.
So you have all day on the 9th.
Yeah, he's in DC.
Okay. That's good. That's good.
Steer that could win the whole thing, so...
Uh-huh.
Okay. Are we ready to rock and roll?
I'm gonna go to Fountain Springs.
You are? What do you got? Turkey shoes? That's the Eagles?
Yep.
Yep.
Good morning. Welcome to the April 1st, 2008, meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. And that's no April fools, we're actually here. Please join the board and I as we salute the flag and then remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Supervisor Worthley isn't with us this morning. He's in Washington, DC. Hopefully, hopefully doing good work. Difficult to assess. We have an interesting agenda this morning, and I think we are going to go right to item 19, our non-timed items.
Morning Chair, members of the board.
Morning.
Thank you for an opportunity to shed some light on our public health programs. The next week is... Next week is the Public Health Week, and we thought this would be an ideal opportunity to bring before your board a discussion of some of the public health programs that we're currently working on and have been involved with over the past year. And also, I'd like to use this as an opportunity to kinda close the loop from discussions that we had here in your board chambers about a year ago, when we had a very difficult discussion and decision that we had to make regarding reduction of services with some of our clinics. And if you recall in those discussions, one of the areas that I brought before the board was the need to seriously look at the allocation of resources and moving from an allocation of about 90% of our money going into support of hospital care and clinical care, and rebalancing that, because when realignment first came into play, it was about a 50/50 mix between public health services and those clinical and hospital services, and it has gotten really out of balance since '92. And one of the slides that I had, this slide might appear familiar, I didn't realize it was so small and busy looking at that time, but it's basically the United States Public Health Services, 10 Essential Elements of Public Health. And it's the type of programming that we need to really be looking at. This is what the public health program really looked to be the leader on, as it relates to bringing in policies, doing monitoring, investigations, et cetera. And we can coordinate and collaborate with the private sector on a number of these things, but on that clinical and hospital, if we have to step back from one area, that's the area that I wanna step back from when resources become short, because there are a number of other facilities and clinics that can operate and pick up that side of the equation.
Would you like me to ask you to explain realignment? And I'm just kidding.
A bad word, but anyway, the... When we closed those clinics, if you recall, one of the concerns was what would happen with those patients as it relates to their clinical access. I'm very happy to report that in the Dinuba Clinic, and Supervisor Worthley's not here, it was extremely smooth transition over to the Hanford Adventist Group. They actually came in and leased the same space that we were leasing, and it was almost a seamless transition for those patients. As it relates to the Porterville Clinic, the vast majority of those patients have transferred their services to our Lindsay Clinic and to our Hilton Health Center Clinic in Tulare. And there was concern, again, brought forward, that maybe a lot of these patients would be faced with going to the emergency room, well, and tracking the emergency room visits that are sent to our department, the actual emergency room visits in the subsequent months to the closures went down at the Sierra View District Hospital. So, we feel like we did a very good job of transitioning, and... But it would still, given the financial picture at the state and their realignment funds being down, yes, it's a bad word, and some of our own internal shortages, we haven't been able to allocate a lot of financial resources to rebuild public health, but these are the areas that we want to do it. I just briefly want to talk about a couple of these, and Dr. Haught, who's going to be joining us, our health officer on the presentation, will go into a lot more depth on three or four of these. Monitoring health status and identifying, that's basically this communicable disease function that we have to track. Diagnose and investigate health hazards in the community. This is a major initiative, the Health Impact Assessment. It's something that we're working through. I participate in a six-county, Central California Partnerships for Public Health. It's the directors of the six counties in the central California, and we're actually looking about, or looking to getting some grant funds to assist us in doing these health impact assessments that looks at things, not just at health indices, but how the social and economic demographics contribute to the health indices that we have. We realize now that many of the health problems we see are tied very directly to social and economic disparities. So, that's part of what we're looking at there. The inform and educate, very active health education program, mobilizing community partnerships and actions to identify and solve problems. This is one of the things that I feel very good that's happened over the past couple of years. We've been able to reach out and build a lot of relationships with nonprofits, community partners, to do a lot of that partnerships and collaborations to carry out messages. One of them that you'll hear about a little bit later on, I think, when we talk about the... Developing plans and policies, if we go to the next one. We have the Tulare County Nutrition Collaborative, which is comprised of representatives from the hospitals, FQHCs, our own office, the Food Link, et cetera. They were very active in helping us as far as keeping WIC in the early mart area. They've been very active in helping us with bringing certified food vendors in that will accept WIC coupons with their farmer's market products. So it's that type of thing that we're out developing policies and procedures. Enforcing laws and regulations, of course, environmental health is extremely active with that. And in addition to the restaurant safety, we've had the hazardous materials, medical waste disposal. You know, we, it kinda goes in under the radar scope from time to time. We get calls because there's an irrigation ditch where someone's disposed three or four garbage bags with syringes or other medical waste, and it's our people that have to go in and take care of those types of things. Linking people, item number seven is basically where that clinical service, if there's an item that you can link in this to providing actual direct hands-on services, is providing healthcare services to those most in need. And we still have an eye towards that. In fact, as I see Supervisor Cox, he sits on the commission with the first five, and we've been very, very active in meeting with pediatricians around this county and trying to identify pediatric subspecialties that we could bring in with those resources. And so, there's initiatives, again, going on with the community members. Assuring competent public and personal healthcare workforce, we've been working very closely with Fresno State and their nursing program, COS, and we're attempting to provide internships with the thought that if these people or students do their internships with us, we can keep them on as employees. And lastly, evaluating the effectiveness of population-based health services and research. And I think Dr. Haught will be talking a little bit more about some of that, those research components. Just briefly, three areas that are, or three grants or projects that I wanted to highlight. The Central California Regional Obesity Prevention Project. This is a, again, a funding for the six counties. It was a $3 million, it's actually a $3,600,000 grant that came into the region, and it's a two-pronged approach to policy setting that can help with the promotion of exercise and promotion of healthy eating. And this has been achieved with a large advisory group, the Tulare County Nutrition Collaborative has taken care of that community input, and then Dr. Haught with her leadership on the, working with the physician element and our own health department. And we've set up a number of goals as far as increasing activity, workplace wellness, retraining physicians, and looking at BMIs and other health indices tied to obesity when they're evaluating pediatric patients and adolescents. So I think we've done a lot. There's a long way to go on that particular project. The SIP Grant, Sexually Transmitted Disease Community Intervention Project. It's one of those that you've got an acronym to define an acronym, STD, defining in the SIP. But we received a national award from the NACO with the, again, the collaboration that our staff had with nurses on training them using science-based education methods for teaching students in schools and doing outreach to students. Just briefly on that, our county is in the, has seen a dramatic increase in syphilis cases. And so that's something that I know we're working very, very closely with the regional representatives from the state, because it's not just our county. It seems like that's one of the sexually transmitted diseases that's on the rise. And again, the Tobacco Control Project, we've been very, very active, a major project that we had underway was in the designation of non-smoking areas, or a non-smoking campus for COS, and helping them to move in that direction. And then again, the marketing restrictions, we were successful in getting no tobacco products advertised out at the Visalia Oaks or at the Tulare County Fair. So we feel good about some of these efforts that we've undertaken. Next, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Dr. Haught, our health officer. So, thank you.
Ray. Morning, Dr. Haught.
Morning. Thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to just talk about several other activities that go on in our health department and that demonstrate how we carry out some of our important public health functions. One of the most well-known programs in public health is the Communicable Disease Program, Control Program. And this involves the functions of monitoring the health status in the community or monitoring the disease incidence, and diagnosis and investigation of the problem, and linking the people that need it with needed services. Some examples of this in our county are, for example, with tuberculosis. We've had, in 2007, we had 25 people with active tuberculosis in our county. And this involves, for each patient that we find with active tuberculosis, this involves an extensive investigation to find out who all their contacts are and test all those contacts for, to make sure whether they've been exposed to tuberculosis and are at risk to be developing or have developed tuberculosis. On average, with all of those cases, there were about 15 contacts for each patient, some fewer, and some had up to 100, based on whether they were in school or where they worked. In addition, for each patient with tuberculosis, they are, the standard of care is to deliver directly observed therapy, which means that you watch them take their dose of medicine every day for six to nine months until they complete their treatment. So we, our public health nurses go to the homes for our patients with tuberculosis on an average of 16 visits per month to deliver the medication and assure that they take it. Luckily, in our county, in the last year, we've not had any cases of drug-resistant tuberculosis, but that overall in the state and worldwide, that's a very serious concern, is drug-resistant TB. And one of the mainstays of trying to prevent that is to make sure that your patients don't miss any doses and don't take sporadic treatment, which can lead to drug resistance. Several other communicable diseases that, just as examples, there's actually 20, I mean, approximately 60 communicable diseases that providers across the state are required to report to their local health departments, and that's to help with disease control, to prevent other people from getting those diseases, and help the state collect information they need for prevention programs. Some examples that show some of the preventive work that our public health nurses and health staff have done is a case of Nicerium meningitis. That's a very serious infection, rare luckily, but it's always fatal if it's not treated. We had one case in 2007, which was very promptly reported, emergency room on a weekend evening, and our public health nurses got involved right away, and we were able to get the, identify the 10 contacts for that patient and get them treated right away to prevent them developing the same infection. Another example is Salmonella infections. That's a classic infection we worry about, whether it's a foodborne illness, and so all those cases require an extensive investigation by the public health nurses to identify the source of the infection. And if the person that has the infection has what we call a sensitive occupation, such as working in childcare, working in a restaurant, food handling, then they need to be taken off of work until we can assure that their infection is... Ray mentioned syphilis cases. Unfortunately, in our county, there's been an increase in 2007 in the number of syphilis cases. There was up to 30 cases last year, and that involves the collaboration with our state STD investigator here in the county to identify all the cases and interview all the patients and identify all their contacts and bring all those people in for treatment. And most often, they're brought into one of our clinics to get treated. We've found that in the case of syphilis, many of the, much of the increase is related to methamphetamine use, groups of people with, using methamphetamine. Now, another function is the vital statistics, and that can be used as a tool to help monitor the health status of the community, and to use the data from the birth and death certificates as, for research, to look into insights on the health problems in... And we recently have a new epidemiologist with us, Sarah Ramirez, who is working on analysis of both birth certificates and death certificate data. And just yesterday, she was able to get summaries, analysis of the 2005 death certificate data that came from the state. That's the most recent death certificate data available through the state. And I apologize, this is not quite easy to read, but on this column here is the list, the top five causes of death for people in our county in 2005, for all patients. There were 2,782 deaths that year. The top five causes were coronary heart disease, cancer, unintentional injuries, strokes, and lung conditions, emphysema, and respiratory tract conditions. But if you look at those deaths that were under, in people under age 75, that's what's defined as a premature death, as we hope that people live to at least age 75. The order of frequency changes. The most common cause is cancer, but then number two is unintentional injury. And the, over here, it shows the years of potential life loss, which is a calculation determined from when the person died and how many years they would, of life they lost if they had lived to 75. So that unintentional injury raises its, into great importance. There's 7,900 years of life lost in our county due to unintentional injuries in 2005. Then number three is coronary heart disease, and diabetes, and then lung disease. And most of these unintentional injury incidents are related to motor vehicle accidents. For males, in 2005, there were 1,438 deaths. For all deaths, coronary heart disease was the primary cause, then cancer, then lung conditions, stroke, and then pneumonia and influenza. This is why our flu vaccine is so important. But again, when you look at those that were premature or before age 75, the order changes, and answer's number one, but then unintentional injury becomes the second leading cause, coronary heart disease, liver disease, and then unfortunately homicide becomes a very frequent cause of premature death for our male residents. For females, slightly different, for all deaths, 1,344 deaths with coronary heart disease, again, number one, cancer, stroke, emphysema, and then diabetes. And the order for premature death is cancer, coronary heart disease, unintentional injury, diabetes, and then stroke. So, we hope to continue this analysis of this data, perhaps to break it down into smaller communities, to be able to determine where we should put our prevention efforts, and to help educate communities on what their own health problems are, so they can begin to collaborate, to work themselves to address these problems. And then just one specific example of use of the death certificate data is in the case of suicide. Review of the death certificates last year revealed that there was an increase in our suicide rate last year. We had, there were 50 suicide deaths in Tulare County last year. 46 of those were Tulare County residents. This led, this finding led to the development of the Suicide Prevention Task Force, which started meeting in December, and is to, continuing to meet, it's brought together people from across the county, all parts of the county, all, all different aspects, education, law enforcement, health, and citizens, people that have lost family members to suicide. And they're looking at best practices and looking at how to increase public health, public awareness of this as a public health problem, and they'll be developing some plans for what we can do in our county to address this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Haught.
I'd try to, a quick question for Dr. Haught. Of the suicides, how many of those were teenagers?
I don't remember the number. I have it at, back at my seat. I can look it up in a minute, but it was, it was a smaller number. The biggest number was the elderly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, you guys, before we do this, questions or anything?
No, she kinda answered my question. I was gonna ask whether there was any of them that were drug-related, and with elderly people, I wouldn't think they were on drugs, hopefully.
As far as drug-related, we, I did collaborate with the coroner's office and look at all their reviews from the death scene investigation, and for those that had drug testing, 60% of them had evidence of either alcohol or drugs at the time of death.
Are you done, Ray? Are you ready for this?
I don't know if we can bring, I think there's one more slide. I just wanted to share with the board the events that are planned for next week during Public Health Week, and, yes. There's a number of health fairs and health information events happening next week. Family Healthcare Network, we're partnering with them at their Ivanhoe Healthcare Fair on Sunday. Wednesday, down at the Government Plaza South, there's going to be an event. Thursday, there'll be the two events, the Visalia Swap Meet and the Pixley Elementary School. Pixley's been extremely energized with this regional obesity prevention with their garden, and then they're doing some things out at their park. I think they've even got RMA to start fixing some things out there so that people can walk in the parks and so, sorry. But so...
God bless Pixley, they're always right there.
God love Pixley, they're very energized. And then the Lindsay Farmer's Market will be on Friday. So there's a number of events that we've scheduled to coincide with Public Health Week, and we feel good about that. Just when Dr. Haught was talking about adult immunizations, it just brought to mind a classic example of the need for public health and public health expenditures. We had, back in the day when I was growing up, they called it lockjaw. Today, they call it tetanus. Tetanus is a vaccine that's readily available, and tetanus is everywhere. It's in your soil if you're working with, working with gardening, especially supposed to be keeping current. We had one case of tetanus where the bill came in from intensive care unit placement and long-term hospitalization and recovery. It was over $400,000, and the vaccine, if we would've had the vaccine, it would've been less than a dollar for that dose. So, it just brings to mind that, you know, you can throw $400,000 after something that could've been prevented with a 90-cent vaccine, so...
Less than a dollar? My doctor charges me 15.
Well, I didn't say the administration, I'm saying the cost of the, but yeah.
That's because you're a special, you're a special case, Supervisor Cox.
So, thank you very much again for tooting our horn and putting some light on public health, that's some, one of those programs that frequently you hear about it when something really goes to pieces. But I think just quietly behind-the-scenes staff are working and doing a great job, and so as it relates to the proclamation, I think I'm done unless there's any questions.
Well, I just, before I do the proclamation, I wanna tell you, I appreciate so much, I'm glad we had the opportunity for you to give us what I consider to be a brief overview of what public health is. I think folks maybe don't understand the complexities and all of the issues that go into it, and how much public health, or lack thereof, can, can impact their lives directly, whether it's communicable disease or impacts, as you just mentioned. So I really appreciate the presentation, and hopefully we gave you enough time, or at least enough time this time, because I'm sure that there may be other opportunities for you to come back and share with us. And so on that note, if, Ray, if you and Dr. Haught, and whoever else you wanna bring with you would like to come, and we'll issue this proclamation.
Angie's our Division Manager for, our new manager for health, education.
People with these very secure gates that we have around.
Such security. I'll let you get shocked first, go through the...
No shock, I hope. Are you enjoying it here? I don't know if you're reading, but I think it's time you go. How many Tulare Board Supervisors, proclamation? County Tulare Board Supervisor's Proclamation, declaring April 7th through 13th, 2008, as Tulare County Public Health Week. Whereas Tulare County Public Health Week campaign will be celebrated April 7th, 13th, 2008, as an opportunity to engage the community with its theme, planning and promoting a healthier tomorrow. And whereas National Public Health Week is now celebrated in 46 states by 60% of local health departments. And whereas the goal during this week is to facilitate preventative health events and enhance awareness of services that are available to all residents in Tulare County. And whereas over the past century, advancements in public health have dramatically improved the lives of all Tulare County residents. Children born today can expect to live 40 years longer than those born in 1900, largely due to the public health achievements, including clean water, safe foods, immunizations, and creation of tobacco-free spaces. And whereas public health efforts alone cannot accomplish the goal of a healthier Tulare County without cooperation and partnership with communities and individuals. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of County of Tulare hereby proclaims the week, April 7th through 13th, 2008, as Public Health Week in Tulare County and urges all citizens to join in activities which make a visible statement that we are strongly committed to healthy people in healthy communities. That seems, and signed by the Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Al Maschida, myself, Supervisor Cox, Supervisor Worthley, Supervisor Ennis. And I wanted to read it so that we could join in in making that strong statement of how important it is to each and every one of us in the county. So, thank you all for the great.
I'll just say one thing while I'm going to go talk to my doctor about my $15 tetanus.
Supervisor Cox wants a refund. Thank you all very much. I think we will go quickly to our consent calendar. Any items that anybody wants to?
Motion approved, 2 through 18.
Second.
Cast your votes, please. With that, we will move to item number one, which is a continued public hearing from February 12th, 2008, for tentative subdivision map for tract number TM 795 for George Costa. Morning.
Good morning. Charlotte Ruesuela, S.R.M.A. Project Review Division. This is a continued item from the February 12th, 2008, public hearing meeting for this proposal, which is a tentative subdivision map. At the February 12th meeting, Jim Winton, the agent, spoke in favor of the project and several persons spoke in opposition to the proposal stating their concerns regarding drainage, use of septic systems, water quality and quantity, groundwater recharge, density, and other concerns as stated by Fish and Game. These issues and/or concerns are addressed in your most recent staff report prepared for this project. Staff will be happy to go over those, each one of those concerns, if you like. Since the February 12th, 2008 meeting, staff has received additional information from the State Department of Fish and Game, California Regional Water Quality Control Board, and private property owner in the Springville area, all of whom state additional concerns with the proposal, including the procedural processing by the county staff and other issues. Staff also received information from Paul Pruitt and Associates, the professionals who conducted the biotic study on the site, and from, excuse me, the applicant and agent clarifying and addressing some of those concerns stated in that new information staff received. I believe you have a copy of that information as well. Based upon the new information received and because it contained information that was not addressed previously, staff is requesting that your board continue this meeting in order to allow staff time to research and address the issues of this case by one of the following means. Number one would be to continue the meeting to a date uncertain and direct staff to recirculate a revised staff report and environmental document through the state clearinghouse process, or refer the project back to the planning commission for review and consideration. Or number three, continue the meeting to a date certain, allowing staff to, a time to address these issues concerned and concerns received from state Fish and Game and also the Regional Water Quality Control Board.
Madam Chair, question? What's the staff recommend? You gave three alternatives. What's the staff recommendation?
Staff would, would prefer to have recommendation number one, which is continue the meeting to a date uncertain and allow recirculation of a revised environmental document through state clearinghouse.
And what's the timeline?
It would be about a 30-day review. Plus the time to prepare the report, which may be a couple of weeks.
Other questions or anything before we open the public hearing? Nope. Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing, or a continued public hearing. So at this time, Chair will entertain comments. I do have a request from Diane Johnson. No? Okay. All right. Anybody wishing to address the board? All right. Close the public hearing part, bring it back to the board. Counsel, I know we have this on closed session.
I would motion to, a motion to approve staff recommendation, continue to a meeting date uncertain, allowing them to recirculate, as explained.
Second, Dan.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. I guess that's what we'll do. Okay, motion passes unanimously to continue, continue the hearing until we have further information. There's no specified date with that. Was that correct, sir?
Correct.
Sorry about that.
I'm expecting about a 60-day turnaround, though.
All right. In that case, next item on our agenda would be. Public comments? On any items under our purview, but not on the agenda? Move to item 21, Board of Supervisors Matters. Mr. Ennis?
I don't really have anything to say today.
Okay. Supervisor Maschida?
Last, went, last Wednesday, Supervisor Ennis and Jeff Forbes and I went to Association of California Water Agencies. And those were various water users from all over the state of California. And I think some of our concerns that we all share is the fact that we had a panel member from the NRDC who was there and we talked about conservation of our water resources. And I believe the NRDC believes that every water, gallon of water we save should be pushed down the river instead of saved for future expansion for our growing population. We also met with, had a chance to see the new Senate pro temp, Mr. Steinberg. And we're still going to have some issues fighting for surface storage. And Assemblywoman Lois, Lois Walk is definitely aiming to have most, a large part of the money spent in the delta. So we will have to address the delta issue before we see any significant additional water storage.
Simply Member Walk is at the end of her term, isn't she?
Yeah, we're happy. This Monday at 6:30, I have a town meeting in Exeter. And what we're going to discuss is the transmission lines that Southern Cal Edison has proposed. Their first alternative will be south of 198, which goes right through Farmersville and is on the north side of the city of Exeter. So I expect at least 200 people at that meeting and it starts at 6:30. It'll be at the Exeter Memorial Building. That's all I have.
This is a meeting sponsored by PG&E or sponsored by you?
By me.
Supervisor Cox?
It's what I call beating the wasp nest with a stick. I just have one, one bit of news. Last Wednesday, since our last meeting, my wife and I became grandparents for the seventh time. And that's the most exciting news in my life this week.
I was particularly interested, Gangzar, that you are, that you were, you were showing your colors as you came into the office shortly after that birth. I think you had hampers and baby wipes hanging out of your pocket.
I did have, I did have baby wipes and a diaper in my back pocket. That's correct.
That's all right. We appreciate that. Is that it for you?
That's it.
I don't know that I have anything to add today. Mr. Russo? You have anything you'd like to say to us?
Well, I just want to thank an employee from the Ag Commissioner's Office who, who left, who helped us with the meeting last Thursday. Marilyn Kenoshta worked long and hard to help set up the meeting with our staff, so I just wanted to thank her. I wish she was still sitting in the, in this room. That's it for me.
Okay. Yeah, I guess we didn't really even talk about our, our, our meeting. I hope that we don't, well, I'm sure we won't wait another three years before we do it again. I don't know how the board feels about the opportunity that presented itself. I always think that any opportunity you have to communicate face-to-face is a lot better than through other means, including the media. It's always best to sit down and discuss these issues with folks that have concern. And I actually was encouraged that there were quite a few people from the public there. So it wasn't just cities, councils, and the Board of Supervisors meeting. I do appreciate all of the board members taking time and showing up. I think we ended up with not quite half of the city representatives there, although there was someone from each city. I think initial count was 17 out of 40 and I think a couple of them may have came in after we officially started the meeting. So, so we were close to about 50%. But I think good things will come from that. And I have already sent thank you notes, I'll tell the board right now, that, sent thank you notes to those that participated and indicated our intention to, in another three months, to try and get together again. We're also working on the subcommittee idea that was, that we hope to form for a smaller working group that may be able to work on some of the issues. But of course, my concern always is, is that that's balanced. So we want to make sure we have, I think there were some of the cities there definitely more interested in weighing in on the county's general plan than, than the others. And so, it's still my thought to try and engage all of them and make sure that they're represented in any kind of committees or any kind of meetings that we have. Okay, thank you for reminding me of that, Mr. Russo. Counsel, we have need for a closed session?
Yes, Madam Chairman, we do. We have items A through F as listed on your board's closed session agenda and addendum. Item B is off agenda. That was the matter related to the Costa subdivision. I do not anticipate any announcements.
Thank you. We'll adjourn then to closed session. Thank you all for being here this morning.